Kristen, you ready? All right, Casey, you ready? All right, good evening again. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Special Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome to the House, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, individual who would be in justice.
Please be seated. All right, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please state your name, address, and we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. So first this evening, we have Regina Zangulis.
My name is Regina Zangulis. I live at 13342 Ormond Way in King George. Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Officers, and Support Staff. I would like to apologize to the Board. The last year and four months have been difficult for everyone, and I am sure you have had every grievance lodged against you. If you open schools, you don't care about the kids. If you don't open schools, you don't care about the kids. Claims have been made about the competency of the Board and your authority to make decisions is being challenged. The Board now sitting here was elected, most of you by a good majority and even unopposed, because we trusted you to make decisions that were best for all the students, not based on the preferences of each family. The Board has been betrayed on this point. The first real test of the constituents' faith has resulted in a fight to the death situation, and for that, I am truly sorry for what you have all endured over the past year. Essentially, the perpetual fallout of the worst snow day call ever, again and again, month after month. This Board is now trusted to consider mask use. Just as with smoking, I can neither control whether someone smokes and whether I breathe the smoke they exhale. With the virus, be it the flu, mono, or COVID, I cannot choose whether the air I am breathing is that of someone who is infected. The difference between smoking and disease is I can smell the smoke and I can see someone smoking and choose to take a different path. I can't do that with a virus or with a bacteria. Many seem to forget, the mask is there to keep you from spreading the disease, not to keep you from getting it. It helps some to keep you forgetting it, but it helps most if you're wearing it and infected. It keeps you from spreading it. What families choose to do anywhere else is their business. What they choose to do in the school is your business. Just as with restrictions about drug, alcohol, and tobacco use on campus and the mandatory vaccination of our children, I ask you to consider what the CDC guidance is and to follow with mask policies. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Zangulis. Hopefully, I got your name right. Next, we have Victoria Matthews.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Benson. My name is Victoria Matthews at 10450 Madison Drive here in King George County, Virginia. I have two children enrolled in King George County's school system. I would like to express how important it is for the children to wear masks at school this year. I understand that this is a divisive issue in our nation and community. However, this concerns our most vulnerable population in our community, our children. I think we all want the same thing, keep our children healthy and safe. We have spent the last 17 months keeping them safe and secure, and we need to keep going until the vaccines are available for all children. This is even more important as we deal with the new Delta variant. We need to stay focused on the science and follow those recommendations made by organizations who specialize in this topic. The American Academy of Pediatrics and, most recently, the CDC recommends that masks should be worn regardless of vaccination status in school. I would also add that we need to protect the staff of the school system as well, including teachers, administrative staff, custodians, and by extension, their families. We also need to protect students and staff with compromised immune systems. I would urge you to look at this issue from a human standpoint. This is about how we can help and protect our fellow humans for the greater good of everyone. If we err on the side of caution now, we will not be asking ourselves later if we could have done something different to mitigate the situation if this escalates into a further health crisis and we start losing members of our community. I don't want that on anyone's conscience. It also shows our children that people's lives are important and valuable. The main point to remember is that this is all temporary. Let me say that again, this is all temporary. We can handle anything temporarily. Our children can handle anything temporarily and will be stronger for it. At some point, hopefully, sooner rather than later, COVID will be a distant memory. Let's find the strength to keep our kids and school staff protected for a bit longer until we have vaccinations for all children. To recap, masks are needed for this school year. Let's stay focused on the science and the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC. Protect the staff of the school system, protect our fellow community members. This is a temporary situation. Thank you very much and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Next, Kathy Romaine.
My name is Kathy Romaine, and I live at 6954 Benton Court. I'd like to first point out that it's nice, Mr. Benson, that you put on your mask only for the camera. This school year has started off a little different so far. We haven't had any surveys and masks. We're not mandatory at the open house today. I think we all know why we didn't get any surveys, because the Board knows that a majority of parents think that masks should be optional and certain Board members can't fathom giving up their control. When I walked into Potomac Elementary today, a box of masks were sitting on the desk outside the nurse's office, a box of three ply disposable non-woven masks that are not medical grade, and a pamphlet inside that stated, "This mask will not prevent the transmission of COVID-19 or other viruses." I suppose it takes common sense to understand what that means, though. I will no longer allow you to jerk our kids around. You can't make up your mind from one day to the next. As thousands of students and parents went through the halls of our county this weekend, or this week, I would say only a handful were wearing masks at Potomac today, including the principal, down under her neck the whole time. So since so many people were without masks today, do you plan on pushing the start date of school for two weeks so everyone can quarantine before mandating masks again? I have no problem if parents send their kids to school with masks or without masks, but if masks are mandated, you will see a huge pushback. A select few of you are unfit to make sane and rational decisions for our kids. That is why I'm asking Hawk, Tolliver, Gonzalez, and Benton to resign, but not only for those reasons. I'd also like to expose some of the abuse and power and intimidation that is going on through this Board. Here's a printout of a Facebook message that Hawk sent to New Life King George back in November when they were using their elementary school for their services. It states, "Let me get this straight. You run a space from King George County Schools, and your children's pastor is now organizing a protest rally against the School Board members. His post has attracted people to consider violence the only answer. Is this the role of a youth pastor?" Which, at the protest last year at the high school, there was absolutely no violence. But as a result, he has indeed stepped back from advocating for our kids because of Hawk's power. In fact, she has... Anyways, there was no violence. Also, earlier this year, Benton denied an employee their Freedom of Information Act which the Freedom of Information Act is supposed to be transparent for all county workers. To this day, the staff member still has no idea who contacted Benson about a situation that happened off the school grounds. I don't care about your feelings or beliefs about COVID, but I do care if you're pushing them onto my children. My kids and many others will not be wearing masks this coming school year, mandated or not, and I hope that you are ready for legal actions and a loss of funding due to parents that will be pulling their kids if you mandate masks. I'll end with this quote, "What is right for you may not be right for me. What is right for me may not be right for you, but what is not right for either of us is to be stripped of the freedom to choose what is right for ourselves."
Thank you, Ms. Romaine. Next, Kristy Wright.
Hi there, good afternoon, good evening. I'm Kristy Wright. I am at 5368 Caladon Road here in King George. I have five kids, one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary school, two littles. I've taken care of COVID patients. I've taken care of 10-month-old babies with COVID that have struggled to breathe and have been in the hospital with us for days. Kids are affected by COVID. No, maybe not, even in the same way as adults are, but if you go to a children's hospital, there's intubated kids there with COVID. So that's not what I came up here to talk to you guys about. What I came up here to talk to you guys about is my high schooler went to orientation, and we came in with our mask, and it was very difficult for us to even go into the auditorium and enjoy. We were so excited that everybody was cheering, and she's in ninth grade, and it was so awesome what they were doing. But we felt like every breath that we took may have been contaminated because we were in an auditorium full of maskless people. And it was frightening, and we had to leave. And we didn't have to, we chose to leave because we don't want the littles to get sick. They're not vaccinated. At work, I'm required to wear a mask. That's my job. I also work in a procedural area, and people are open on the table. And if I exercise my freedom to take off my mask, my personal freedoms in the OR, that's not what's best for the people in the room. That's not what's best for the patient or other people. We practice benevolence, which is do no harm. We don't want to do harm to anyone. Nobody... Most people don't like wearing masks. I don't like wearing masks, but this is just ongoing, and it's gonna keep going. And the hospital is full. And you guys, everybody is just up to here, and I get it. But I cannot, in good faith, send my kids to school knowing that they're gonna be exposed to this highly transmittable virus, which is, according to the CDC, it's a substantial transmission level in our county, which is only 13% vaccinated, 13%. And that's not including the kids. That's including all people that are eligible for the vaccination right now. That's not including the children. So it's not my desire to homeschool the kids again, believe me. But my first job is to keep them safe. It doesn't really matter what everybody thinks. I just gotta keep them safe and healthy. That's my first job, and they want...
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Your time is up.
Thank you.
All right, next, Albert Wright.
Good evening, Board members, officers, parents. I'm Albert Wright. I live at 5368 Caladon Road. My wife is Kristy Wright. She said we have five littles. I am calling the Board to mandate masks. I hate wearing this mask. It's a requirement at work. I'm a federal employee. At my job, 10% of my workforce has been affected by COVID, and that caused major shutdowns, restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. I have been vaccinated. I have underlying conditions. I have little children that we quarantine, but we're putting my little children at risk if we send our other kids to school and they bring that virus home with them. They're putting me at risk. Even the vaccinated can still get sick with COVID. This mask, it's uncomfortable, yes, but it's saving your life, saving my life, it's saving... I don't see what the big deal is. Before this meeting started, we got up, we're all united, looked at the flag, said our pledge of allegiance, together. I don't know why this is such an issue. I don't know why we can't do something as simple as wear masks and protect our fellow Americans, our Board members, our children, our officers. I've been in King George, we're new to King George. We've been here for five months. My kids never been to school in this county. Elementary, middle schooler, high schooler, all dying to go to the school. I work an hour away from... I live an hour away from my job because I want to move to this county. Because of your schools, they play a major part. But if my kids are not protected, unfortunately, I'll have to pull them out. I do not want to do that. My wife does not want to homeschool. I don't want to homeschool. I just want to protect my children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Cindy Myers.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Myers, and I live at 14030 Mill Bank Road. I'm here to ask you to please not force masks on our children. You told us earlier this summer that you would not require masks, that they would be optional. I'm asking that you stick to that. Last week, my 15-year-old daughter was sick. I took her to the King George Mary Washington Urgent Care, and they did a throat culture. It was negative, but they did not want to do a COVID test. They said, "We don't have any cases." The next day, she was worse, so I called her pediatrician in Fredericksburg, and they weren't able to see her that day. They could see her the next day. And I said, "Well, while I'm waiting, should I take her to CVS for a COVID test?" And they said, "No, just wait." So I took her the next day, and they ran other tests, and they did a COVID test. And the doctor said, "We're gonna run it just because she's here, but we haven't had a case in months." She didn't say days, weeks, she said months. She did not have COVID, it was a virus. But when you do have COVID, when they do contact tracing, they don't care if you have a mask on or not. They just want to know who you've been with and who you've been with for more than 15 minutes. It has nothing to do with if you have a mask on or not. The other thing I wanted to say was, we aren't... We're special, we're in King George, and I feel like a lot of times, we tend to do what Stafford and Prince William and Fairfax do, but we are not that population. And I don't think we should, just because they're doing it, we should do it. There were only five cases in King George yesterday. And when I looked it up, the vaccination rate is 40% in King George. So I feel that people who are able to and want to vaccinate, and it should be the same for the masks. If you want to wear a mask that makes you feel like you're being more protected, wear the mask, but it should not be a forced issue. So please, continue to make masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Kathryn Long.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Benson. My name is Kathryn Long. My address is 16515 Ridge Road. To date, I have had five children in the King George Public School System with my first graduate this year. In 2014, my husband and I made the decision to leave the tyranny of the state of California. After searching around the country for some time, my husband was offered a job and further education in Maryland. We considered moving our then-family of seven, now-family of nine and growing, to different places, but finally decided that King George is where we wanted to be, largely due to the safety and conservative principles this county seemed to hold. Since 2015, we have grown beautiful roots in this county that we love. We are so thankful for the teachers and support staff, especially Ms. Tridle, Ms. Collier, and Ms. Leonard, who loved and patiently did their best to educate our children through the pandemic. However, enough is enough. There is limited and shoddy data to support masks in the first place. But if you want to wear one, wear one. There is even less science to support mask mandates at all. For children, the only scientific studies I have been able to find have been done in highly monitored pediatric wings of hospitals. What on earth does that have to do with classrooms and playgrounds? Nothing. It's because the data is not transmissible, the settings are not even similar. So of what science is this based on? None. It is simply control. No healthy society in the history of forever has placed adult health on the shoulders of children. All the grownups get to choose how to handle their health. If they want a vaccine, they can get one for free almost anywhere. As a side note, I would argue that those adults who have chosen to not get vaccinated probably care the least that my six-year-old spends seven hours a day with her face stifled as bacteria breathes against her mouth, she gets sores on her face, and she gets endless headaches and is banned from interacting with her friends as a normal six-year-old. But this isn't even the main point of tonight's vote. As far as I'm concerned, tonight's vote is that of a parent's right to choose. That is our parental rights and God-given authority and responsibility to make the choices and own them for the children He has given us. Parents, it is time to fight for our right to choose. Not only our right to choose if our children wears a mask, but also our right to choose where they go to school. It is time for school vouchers. Board members, my children do not belong to you. If you vote to mandate masks tonight, you are really voting to take those parental rights out of my hands. And if that is your vote, my answer is that I will be taking my children out of your hands.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Brian Gregan.
Brian Gregan, 9485 Elm Court, King George, Virginia. I have a daughter at King George Middle School and a daughter at King George Elementary School. I was just at the middle school and the King George Elementary School orientations. Probably about 70% of the parents and students were not wearing masks at the middle school. Probably about 60% weren't wearing masks at the King George Elementary School. I just wanted to point that out. And I had some things to mention, but the governor had a press conference at 2:00, and he added in this law that's been in effect since March 30th of this year, which states that the state of Virginia is required, counties are required to offer five-day in-person instruction, and they are also required to follow the CDC recommendations. And the CDC does exactly that. They recommend. That's what they are, they're recommendations. So the CDC recommends now that all students and staff wear masks indoors. On June 21st, when this Board, all of you, voted unanimously to allow for optional masking in King George, Virginia, there was a recommendation by the CDC, which you were supposed to follow at that time, which stated that under 12, because they couldn't be vaccinated, had to wear masks. You didn't follow that. So why would all of a sudden, from my understanding, there will not be a vote tonight? There won't even be a discussion. There's already been a decision made, from what I understand. That's not right. You can't do that. Because if you don't vote tonight, then my kids and I think the whole community can go to school on Monday, mask optional. So it's your call what you want to do tonight. But I think, if you're gonna do the right thing, you should represent the community in King George. 30-plus counties in Virginia are optional. You don't think most of those counties, or at least some of those counties, knew about this law? That threat from the governor was an empty threat. He is trying to make a mask mandate for a state that he can't make a mask mandate for. That's the bottom line. CDC recommends. So just remember that when you guys have your little... Or if you even allow discussion tonight, just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregan. Martin Norton, Norland? I'm sorry. Martha. Martha, so I'm sorry.
That's all right. Good evening. My name's Martha Norton. I live at 4599 Sequoia Lane in King George. I have a child that's gonna be in the high school. I am pro-parental choice for masks. And what I want to talk to you all today is about what you're doing. What you're doing is a risk calculation essentially, which involves three things. You have to decide what is it that you're trying to avoid? What is the risk of that thing happening? And does that risk justify the government intruding on a parent's right to choose for their kids? That's it, those three things. So what are you trying to avoid? Well, you're not trying to avoid zero COVID. That would be crazy. We're not gonna get to zero COVID. So if that's what you've come to do today, then you'll never cede over the authority back to us. We will always wear masks. You're also not trying to avoid having COVID be under a certain number of cases because the case count is not a very helpful metric. And why is that? Because there are cases that are asymptomatic. There are cases that have very, very little effect on the person. There are cases that therapeutics work beautifully and they never make it to hospitals. So case counts aren't helpful. What are you trying to avoid? You're trying to avoid death and hospitalization. So what are the numbers, then? Let's look at what the numbers are. The current numbers, according to the Virginia Department of Health's website, the current seven-day rolling death average is 2.29, four times less than it was when the governor lifted the mandate at the end of May. What was it at its height? It was 83, 40 times what it is today. The current seven-day rolling case average is 995. When the mandate was lifted, it was actually less. It was 265. At the height of the pandemic, it was 6,000. The current seven-day hospitalization rate is 17.7. In May, when the mandate was lifted, it was about the same, 16.5. At the height, it was 183. What does that tell us? It tells us we have more cases, less deaths, and less hospitalizations. It tells us vaccines are working, therapeutics are working, natural immunity is working. We're actually in a pretty good spot. So what do you focus on? Death rates and hospitalizations. What are the stats? I just gave them to you. So what is the risk? Does that risk justify you all taking the authority from us? And the answer is no. It absolutely does not. If you look at the data and what it really says, you cannot take the authority. You must give it to us. It takes a brave politician to cede authority back to its citizens. Be brave.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Next, Brandon and Freeland, Haga.
Good evening, Ms. Gonzalez. As you know, I fall under your represented district, and we are here this evening due to the lack of confidence our family and hundreds like us have in this Board to make decisions in the best interest of our children. I'd like to reintroduce my daughters, Bree, Bran, and my son, Brock. Some may question why I would bring them up here. Well, the answer is easy. The repeated failed decisions of last year and the decisions you are about to make do not impact me. However, they do directly impact them, and they have right to see the faces of you three and Dr. Benson, who has repeatedly failed them about to do the same. Kids, this Board and Superintendent that failed you last year are up here to vote to force you to cover your faces, knowing science shows that masks are not effective in preventing COVID. They do all that while knowing they will sit unmasked in their homes or offices for the next school year while you suffer for seven to nine hours a day. Kids, when you grow up to study this time in history, one day, and the world is rampant with social and mental disorders due to America's overreach in COVID policies, never forget this moment and never forget their faces. My question to the Board is, who do you think you are? There is not a federal mandate, mandate in masks in schools. There is not a state mandate, only recommendations and an empty threat by a governor today that has no lawful authority. Why, Dr. Benson, Carrie, Gail, and Kristen, do you think it stops with you? Why are you not following suit and providing recommendations down the chain for the parents to decide? It is not the government or any elected official's right to place masks on children to include you. We all have access to the same medical information that you have and are capable to do and make decisions for what's best for our families. Just like you, we're 18 months into this and know how to protect our families and understand these facts. The average age of death for COVID is 82 years old, 82. You have a 99% survival rate with or without the vaccine. In the health district of ours, which is 365,000 people, 11 people under the age of 50 have died in 18 months. Yet, here we are. King George's parents, it's simple. The time has come to stop letting a few people on this Board impact thousands in this community in such a detrimental, reckless, and incompetent way. A few of you of this Board has let this community down long enough. It needs to stop today. For all the parents out there, regardless of what the pre-planned vote is tonight, this is our decision to make and not the School Board. I encourage all of you to send your kids to school on Monday how you choose. It's your choice and your choice alone. Dr. Benson, if you recommend this Board votes to recklessly ignore the majority of this public and mandate masks tonight, I truly hope you've conducted a full legal review and your staff is trained in nondiscrimination and segregation laws and prepared to properly handle all the kids that will show up on Monday without masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haga. Dee Strauss? Oh, I'm sorry, Freeland, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Freeland, and I just have a few things I want to say about wearing masks this school year. First, the use of masks has become very politicized, has become less and less about keeping people safe in the science. In a study conducted by the CDC in October of 2020 on 314 patients, they found that 70.6% of COVID-positive patients report always wearing a mask, and another 14.4% reported often wearing a mask. Only 3.9%... Only 3.9% reported never wearing a mask. Second, daily usage can cause things like acne, irritation, allergic reactions, headaches, and sometimes anxiety. I know this because most of these have happened to me from the mask during last school year. Third, nobody in this room can explain the long-term psychological effects masks will have on my generation. Finally, this should be the parents and students' choice whether or not they want to wear a mask. Same goes for the vaccination. It's not your choice how others should live their lives. Please respect people's right to choose whether they want to wear a mask, not wear one, vaccinate or not vaccinate. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeland. Dee Strauss?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members, Staff and Audience. My name is Dee Strauss, 10362 Ridgeway Drive, a proud teacher of King George County. I want to share a story with you from our open house last night at the high school. I was so happy to greet the students and parents in person, mostly maskless, some with handshakes and others with hugs. And then I heard my name from a vaguely familiar voice. Hello, Mrs. Strauss. I'm here with my son, who is in your class, just like I was. It was Sabrina. She was in one of my first marketing classes 21 years ago. I saw several of these early students of mine last night. I'm sorry. These adults now entrusting their children in our care for their high school experience. I applaud you and thank you for making the decision previously to allow our students and staff to make it their choice to wear a mask. I cannot even begin to explain the effects that smiles and facial expressions have on me and how my smiles and facial expressions affect the people I encounter. Please stick with this previous decision. Please do not cover this smile and the smiles that I'll get from Sabrina's son along with the rest of the students and staff at King George High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Don Shelton?
Good evening. I'm Don Shelton, I live at 9430 Ashman Court. In recent months, we have learned that we can't trust National His, His Institute of Health, who, we can't trust CDC because they lied to us about many things. Regarding to masks, that was an email by Dr. Fauci in March of 2020. He said the only mask works is the N-35 and the rest of the masks does not work at all. We've been lied to. Again, the decision of who wear a mask and who does not wear a mask with our children in our school should be the parents' decision, not yours, not the governor, not CDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Is there anyone on the line? Mr. Vance? All right, it looks like first we have Amy Lilly.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Hello? Can everyone hear me? Hi, my name's Amy Lilly. I live at 8484 Pasco-Tansy Road. I have a son who's going to be a rising 11th grader in King George High School.
Mr. Vance?
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Amy Lilly. I live at 8484 Pasco-Tansy Road in King George. I have a rising 11th grader in King George High School and a 2020 graduate of King George High School during the beginning of this pandemic lockdown. My first concern with the board making the decision on masking our children is that none of you, not one single person, is a medical expert. You have no qualifications to make these decisions and I have great concern over that. You've spent the last 17 months holding our children's education hostage. There is science that states, and I forwarded the scholarly documents to the board yesterday, that regular masks are not effective. The National Institutes of Health's director himself came on public television the other day stating that, that the regular masks that these children are wearing in school are not effective. Only N-95 masks are effective. Are you going to pay for the N-95 masks? They're not even available to the general public, last I checked. Furthermore, the mental health crisis this is causing to our children in our school district is, and across this country, is unacceptable. My own son was suicidal and threatened to commit suicide and attempted to commit suicide and was hospitalized for mental health as a direct result of the hostage that you created with my son's education and the isolation created by COVID over the past 17 months. Do you want to pay my medical co-pays? Do you want to pay my hospitalization bills? Do you want to pay the continuing cost that my husband and I are incurring to right the wrongs that your board has created over the past 17 months? My son has had COVID-19. He has the antibodies. It's proven by a medical test. Why should he have to wear a mask in schools? He shouldn't and he won't be. Three members of this board have ruined a generation of K through 12 kids. And it is a travesty and you should all be ashamed of yourselves. My child will not be going to school masked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. John, who do we, okay. Uh, next we have William Kents.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, uh, my name is Amber Kents. I'm actually commenting in place of my husband. Good evening, uh, school board, Madam Chairperson, Dr. Benson, members of the audience and members of staff that are present or online. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amber Kents and I live at 14368 Chastain Drive in King George. My stepdaughter is a sophomore at KGHS and will also be attending Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. For those citing low case and death numbers, I ask, what if it was someone you love and care for that was one of those statistics? Would you like being, to be considered a statistic? And Mrs. Strauss, is a smile worth more than a life? I want to urge the school board to follow Governor Northam's recommendation on abiding by Senate Bill 1303 that the governor signed into law earlier this year. The law follows, requires following CDC recommendations. This is a law, not a recommendation. It must be, it must be done. And I really do understand that wearing a mask stinks. I personally find it very difficult. I even didn't re-enlist in the military because every time I put a gas mask on, I had a panic attack. And I can't scuba dive or snorkel either. But I wear a mask when I'm in public, every single time. And I have been, have been since the beginning of the pandemic, despite getting vaccinated in January. Even our three-year-old son wears a mask when asked, for as long as necessary. Masks have been proven to work. They are recommended by the CDC, AAP, and a majority of other doctors. The possibility of community transmission is high across our area and King George only has approximately half of its population even partially vaccinated. No numbers exist for the Delta variant in schools in the U.S. because school hasn't been in session since Delta became the dominant variant. Why should we risk some of the most vulnerable among us? Because wearing a mask is inconvenient. Wearing a mask is no different than being expected to wear pants in public. And many people consider pants to be inconvenient. But they do it because it's against the law to not wear pants. My final reason is that it is simply necessary to abide by the law. If you need to vote to make people happy about that, please vote to mandate masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kents. Susan Park?
Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Benson, and those in attendance. My name is Susan Park. I live at 10064 Francis Folsom Drive. As the parent of a King George Elementary student who is too young to be vaccinated, I'm asking you to follow the mitigation strategies put forth by our local health district, the Virginia Department of Health, and the CDC. In fact, every major health organization, from the American Academy of Pediatrics to the World Health Organization, offers a simple strategy to keep children safe while still promoting in-person learning as the priority. Universal masking for everyone over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status. COVID cases are rising locally, including among our youngest population. According to VDH data, 18% of positive cases for our health district are among 0 to 19-year-olds and they remain one of the top age groups to be impacted by this pandemic. Our county is currently in the high transmission range of COVID spread. The majority of our students have not been fully vaccinated and those under 12 years of age are not even eligible for the, for vaccination. And this leaves most of our students vulnerable. It also allows them to spread this disease to others in our community who may be less able to recover. I understand that wearing a mask is not ideal, but face it, there's nothing about living or learning in a pandemic that is. Yet the school board's first priority should always be to maintain the safety of King George students and educators. And to do so, it is absolutely essential that you listen to the experts. I recognize that the debate around choice continues to ring loudly, especially as it pertains to masking. For all intents and purposes, choice in and of itself is not a bad thing. I try to teach my children every day to make good choices. But we would do well to remember that choice is often a luxury. Many do not have the choice to withdraw and homeschool their children. Many do not have the choice to afford adequate healthcare for themselves or for their families, especially if hospitalization or long-term care is required. We are being asked to sacrifice our comfort and make the choice to listen to the experts. Let's make the choice to work together and protect our most vulnerable. Remember, wearing a mask doesn't just protect you or protects others. It's an act of selflessness. King George's optional approach to masking would continue to allow for disruptions to our students' education. Disruptions are exactly what we should be trying to avoid, especially given the previous school year. My children need in-person learning and the company of their peers and teachers. And so I hope that you will reconsider your current decision to make masks optional and require them for the coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Park. Jonathan Palmer?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, school board and Dr. Benson and everybody in attendance, staff. My name's Jonathan Palmer. I live at 17233 Serra Lane, King George. Me and my children, my family, we were at both Potomac Elementary School and King Jordan Middle School for the orientations this evening. There were obviously some people wearing masks, some people not. I personally was not wearing masks. I'm vaccinated. However, I did ask my children to wear a mask. That was my choice. I asked this, this board to keep the choice to the parents. You know, we hear so many things about, uh, certain political views, is my body my choice? Why doesn't it work for this? Why can't we have a choice? It's my children. I should be able to choose what's best for them, not what you choose what's best for them. I'm tired of the same three individuals of this board holding our kids' education hostage and making decisions before even taking into consideration those that majority of people want. I know you've already made your decision and no matter what I say, probably it's going to not even go better. But I please ask that you keep the mask option open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Melissa Phipps? Mr. Vance, are we still, okay. What was that? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Rachel Scott?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
My name is Rachel Scott and I live at 12097 Cobblestone Court. I have a daughter in first grade in King George Elementary. I ask that the board not change the current position that masking be optional for students, teachers, and staff. Even though total cases have increased in the recent month throughout the whole country, cases in King George are still extremely low. The average daily number of cases for King George in the last week is only three. I do not believe King George numbers warrant changing the mask guidance at this time. If you do change your minds, I ask that masks not be required during PE recess or any outdoor activities. Masking in these conditions is dangerous and especially during the high heat we will be experiencing over the next two months before summer comes to an end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Scott Cogill? Cogill, I believe? Cogill, C-O-G-I-L?
Hello, my name is Scott Cogill, 7935 Heron Way. I ask you to stand by your original decision to leave masks optional. The infection rate in the county is extremely low and even lower, really next to zero for kids. I have a kindergartner starting this year and I can tell you, it's a part-time job keeping a mask on a child. Kids cannot and do not wear them properly. They fall off onto the dirty floor and reapplied to their face. Any prolonged exposure in a room renders the mask ineffective anyway. Cloth masks are only in the range of 30% effective while worn properly. This is from the CDC. Any prolonged exposure deems masks ineffective. Kids are in the same room all day. It is a distraction to teachers to have to come to mask police. Teachers have plenty of opportunity to get the vaccine if they choose. And thankfully, it's a fact, it is the science, that the very, the virus has a low transmission rate in children. Even lower rate for severe side effects. And while unfortunate and sad for those who have suffered, it has a very low mortality rate. The flu and RSV are common illnesses in children and have a much greater mortality rate, but no masks for that. There's also a fact that kids are not super-spreaders, which was the original thought in the beginning, but proven false. Last year, private schools stayed in person with very little issue and stayed open all year. While the vaccination rate in this county is not as high as other places, the transmission rate is one of the lowest. Kids need to see their, each other's faces. They need to see the teacher's face. They need to see those smiles. Life is a balance of risks and this is one I want to make for my child. One person stated this is temporary. I think we've all heard that before. I heard it 18 months ago. I was told once I got the mask, I could go maskless. Or got the vaccine, I could go maskless. But now that's changing. But what has stayed the same is that kids are not vulnerable to this virus. I want to thank you for your service to the county. I know this is often a thankless job. The pay is small, the rewards are small. And I know you have a lot of contention on this issue. But as a parent of a child in the school, please do not mandate my child to wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cogill. Amanda Robey?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello? Okay. So my name is Amanda Robey. I live at 7331 McDaniel Road in King George. We've heard, so far I've heard a lot of medical facts, and I won't give you medical facts because, let's be honest, I don't know any. But what I'm going to give you is life facts for my family particularly. I work over forty hours a week trying to provide for my family, and my son is going into kindergarten this year. He does not want to wear a mask, and I have forced him to wear a mask since the beginning because he has medical factors that play into it, and I've made him wear a mask. When the mask mandate got lifted, I gave my son a choice, which he has because he's a human being. I gave him the choice, and he chose not to wear it. Since he has not worn it, has he contracted COVID? No, no, he has not. Has he lived his life to the best? Yes, yes, he has. There's been plenty of parents who have told me on online forums and posts that have been on the social media apps that, oh, we'll just pull your kid out of school if they do a mask mandate. Well, reality is, is not every parent can do that and has the luxury to do that. I want my child to go to a top-notch school and to get the best education that he possibly can. That's why I moved from my town in Maryland, which I was born and raised, and had whole hopes of retiring there and growing my family there. I moved to King George because of the amazing school systems that you guys have. But requiring my child to have a mask does nothing for his education, and it doesn't help him. All it does is irritate him. He can't breathe, and he's not going to want to wear it. So why make our children do what's best? Because I will ask you, and I can guarantee none of you have ever met my children. You don't know my child. You don't know a single thing about him. So who are you to tell me what's best for my child? You're not. So I feel like it should be up to us as parents because we know our children best. If you choose to send your child to school in a mask, so be it. If you don't, do not come at me for having my child not wear a mask. Because for us, we deem it's not necessary. You can't judge people for doing it, and you can't judge people for not. But I can tell you that it's my child, my choice, and you can't tell me what I can and cannot do with my child because he's still alive and well. So I've been doing so good so far, as have the other students and parents in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robey. Mr. Vance, who do we have next? Patrick Tipton?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, since I'm not going to go giving everybody a bunch of stats, facts, figures, because like Ms. Robey just said, I don't know any. And depending on what news channel you watch, they're going to be different anyway. So I'd just like to say that we don't need these masks. All right, I'm outside right now, breathing fresh air. My kids are outside playing, breathing fresh air without a mask. And we are at school today, teachers, students, most people didn't have on a mask, and it was great. I heard Ms. Strauss, who is one of my child's teachers, and she was emotional about seeing faces and smiles. That's right. You know, you need to see, you need to see the emotion. You need to see, you know, the faces. And as far as distraction goes, I can't think of anything that would distract more than having to say huh, 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 all the time throughout a class or throughout the day when you can't understand somebody because they're all muffled. So, I mean, thanks for everything that you do, everybody, Mr. Collins especially. You rock. And I hope that you guys vote to keep the mask mandate, you know, keep it optional. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. Shanice Castilla?
Hello?
Hello? We can't hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so my name is Sam Castilla. I'm at 5024 Spinnaker Lane. I didn't really want to get into much of a, I guess, a philosophical argument about the efficacy of masks or, you know, the freedom argument about masks. I've more so just had a suggestion, and I think that the school board should seriously consider obtaining a supply of N95 masks and distributing them to children and families that are concerned about the safety of the school environment. And that way, we get around this whole choice thing where people feel like, you know, requiring the mask is going to be the end of the world for, you know, their freedoms or is going to, you know, harm their child's, you know, psychological state in some way. And the reasoning in providing the N95 masks is that if the mask policy stands as is, where masks are essentially optional, it means that kids who choose to wear a mask are going to be exposed to unmasked, unvaccinated, potentially sick children. And in that environment, a standard cloth mask offers the wearer very little protection from, you know, contracting the virus. And, you know, lots of people, I think that is something that everyone has sort of agreed on in this meeting, that the efficacy of cloth masks is obviously not as high as N95 masks. So if we want to make people who are worried about the school environment safer, we should at least offer them a legitimate manner of protecting themselves. So again, my suggestion is that we please consider providing N95 masks to any students or community members that need one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castilla. Stephanie Sheridan?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Hello, board members and superintendent and my new, soon-to-be-new neighbors. My name is Stephanie Sheridan. My current address is 15132 Arm Place in Woodbridge, Virginia. My address as of September will be 7112 Wiselyne in King George, Virginia. I have been, as knowing that I will be moving into the county, I have been following the actions of the board since the June 21st vote. And I ask that you stick to your vote and not rescind the mask optional vote. I have a daughter who will be starting second grade at the end of this month in your school, and she does not like to wear her mask. It falls down over her nose. It causes her ear problems, and it's a distraction in school. I know that someone earlier said that this is temporary. We've been doing this for eighteen months, and there seems to be no end in sight if we go back to a mandatory mask. According to the Senate bill that says we must follow CDC guidelines, the CDC has always recommended masks in schools because of the flu virus and other things like that. But this has never come up before until now. I understand that last year, while we were virtual and going back to school, that the choices were made to keep kids masked, but it is a low transmission in kids. It has not been proven to ever be a super spreader in school. And there are better mitigation standards like air filtration and cleaning that do a much better job at helping to transmit, to prevent the transmission of the virus than a cloth mask, as has been spoken to about, just about every parent that has spoken already today. It is your job to stick to your unanimous decision and to allow the parents of this community to have the choice to do what they feel is best, to allow the teachers to do what they feel is best, the bus drivers, the janitors, and everybody to do what they feel is best. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't wear a mask. What I will say is, if this board chooses to make masks mandatory, I will remove my daughter, and I will challenge you for your seats the next time the elections are up. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Mr. Vance, are there any other comments online? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone who's come out to make comments this evening. Unless our objections, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess. Okay. All right. So thanks again, everyone, this evening. So tonight's special meeting was called earlier this week to review and discuss our current optional masking policy in light of new data from the Virginia Department of Health that indicates King George County to be in the substantial category of COVID transmission. That said, Governor Northam held a news conference earlier today, during which time additional information was shared. Dr. Benson, can you please review with us the guidance that was provided?
From the governor's news conference.
Correct.
So this afternoon, we learned, as many of the public speakers have mentioned, that Governor Northam explained, or in my opinion, enforced his stance that Senate Bill 1303 did come into, is now in law, I think, as of July 1. The new law does require in-person instruction be offered and that such instruction be provided in a manner that, in which it adheres to the maximum extent practicable to any currently applicable mitigation strategies for early childhood care and educational programs and elementary and secondary schools to reduce the transmission of COVID-19 that have been provided by the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. When I heard that, I did contact our state superintendent as knowing time was of the essence. We had this meeting tonight, asking if what I had heard and what I interpreted I heard was correct and that I wasn't overinterpreting. And he confirmed that it was clear that at school divisions, not just ours, of course, but school divisions across Virginia would need to adhere to the CDC recommendations as far as masking. He then later that day put out, or later today, put out a memo with the very same language. So that is what's transpired today statewide. If you want anything else that I can help the board with.
Okay. Thank you for the overview. So would anyone like to make any comments with regards to our current mask optional policy?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I appreciate the input. First and foremost, my job on the school board is an elected job. I'm elected to represent the members of James Monroe District. So those are my constituents. And I also make decisions on this five-member board for all the county citizens. But I am to represent the interest of my constituents. My constituents, I get emails. I see them in stores. I'm all about town, all over the place. I see lots, thousands of people. Out of the 27,000 people or so in King George, I probably run across in the last year 26,000. So my perspective comes from the point of your representative. What my personal opinion is, unless, I will always vote for what my constituents believe, unless it's a moral issue for myself, and then I will, I will not. And I will state the reason why, if it's a moral objection. So my constituents overwhelmingly want to keep the optional mask going. The board, we came together on that date. We actually, actually came together. You know, last time I can remember in a couple of years that we agreed on something. And so I don't think that the government has a right in your family. So, you know, I'm TC Collins. I'm here for the government. I'm going to help you. That, you know, we all know the government has become more overbearing. The press conference coming from Governor Northern today is threatening to you. And I don't think that you should stand for this type of threats to your families, whether you are a pro-masker or not a masker. You shouldn't be bullied into things. And the state tries to bully local divisions. When in the state code, it says that local divisions have the authority. It says they shall have the authority. There's words in Virginia code, and one of them is shall. That means you will. You have may, and you have recommend. That you can, but it doesn't make you. So the word shall is a very powerful word in the Virginia Code section. You'll see it almost, almost in every section. So the Virginia Code that is referenced by the governor doesn't say shall. What it says is it recommends. And the word recommends means just what it says. They recommend it. The state superintendent, you know, I got, I have his, I have his email here. And it says, as the governor noted, Virginia requires. It does not require. That is incorrect information. When we talk about the numbers in King George and so forth, well, all y'all brought numbers forward. But what's the bottom line? What do you want? Why are we allowing the government to take our families over? It's driving, it's, I'm starting to become emotional about this because I see it every day, little, little pics of the government. You can, you can watch meetings of any government authority, and you'll see taking away your rights and values. King George, we had people come in and talk about, they went to the schools, and overwhelmingly, again, they want optional masks. I understand the arguments. Don't get me wrong. I do understand the arguments on both sides. But the main thing is that, number one, we have to have correct information. Number two, we have to follow the law. Number three, you have to vote for the people that best represent you, not just local, but also state and federal. So I don't know, I don't think that the governor is representing King George citizens to what their will is. I'm not going to go against the will of the community. I'm here for the will of the community, whether it be mask or whether it be whatever, the calendar, whether it be educational issues. There's state laws we have, we have to, shall, shall, shall. We shall offer this, we shall do this, and we shall do that. But we do not have to have masks mandated. If you let masks be mandated today, today's tolerance is tomorrow's acceptance. What you tolerate today will be accepted tomorrow. Tomorrow, they'll take, something else will be taken away from you. And you can see that's been a, historically, that's been going on. Now, you know, some people, I'm talking to the choir, and some people disagree with what I say. But I don't think that you can disagree that my job is to represent you, all of you. So that's what I'm doing, and that's why I continue to support the optional masks. I think the parents know their children's health the most. I don't think that, I am not a doctor. I'm a retired state police. I know nothing about healthcare, other than when they are no longer alive. So I'm not here to be an expert in anything, other than, I am an expert in law. I've been, I've been, I have been qualified in many courses as an expert. And so when I read the law, I read from those, from that viewpoint. And the law is, is clear of what it says. You can try to put anything in it you want. You can try to make it work your way. It's kind of like the Bible. People try to make the Bible fit their lifestyle instead of fitting the Bible's lifestyle. Well, I won't get into all that today, but that's how it goes. So I want to stay with mask optional. I would like to continue that. If there is no vote tonight, then the, the, it will have to stay mask optional because that is the last vote on the 21st. And so it is the board's authority to do that. And so the board needs to hold that authority to do that. I might have a redress, but that's it for now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Hawke? Until we got to later on.
Turn your mic on.
Benson? Why are you asking if I have a comment if we're going down the road? I don't know.
Well, that was my question. Are we going down?
Let's, how about we go down the row? Everyone gets one chance. You can ask questions, and then we can go from there.
Okay. I'll be short and simple, and I suspect most of you know where I'm coming from. I'm a very practical old social worker. I think we are elected to make good decisions for the children of the county, whether it's hiring teachers or whether it's making healthcare decisions in the long run. So I am going to suggest and recommend that we follow the governor's suggestions and the CDC recommendations.
All right. Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins, you have.
I would object to.
Mr. Collins?
We are, healthcare, make healthcare decisions.
Okay. Mr. Collins, let's, Mr. Collins, objection noted. Continue down the row. Ms. Oliver?
I've been torn about this decision all week, as many people know. I'm not sure, I think I'd like to hear what Ms. Panzera's questions are for Dr. Benson. And I think maybe we have some compromises, alternatives that we might could discuss. I'd like to hear what Dr. Benson has to say, too.
Okay. Ms. Panzera?
Yeah. So, Dr. Benson, I just have a couple of questions because, you know, I listened to Governor Northam's speech today, briefing, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, I'm a little taken back. I don't understand how this was a law that was passed in March. And there's multiple school districts, and you reached, and I, that have made the decision and have been going back and forth, having this discussion on whether masks should be mandated or not. And Dr. Lane, who is our state superintendent, has been, you know, having meetings with you and other superintendents across the state, and never was this ever brought up. And I have a really hard time understanding why, all of a sudden, you know, I feel like as I'm listening and watching this, I felt like that I was completely blindsided. And I don't understand how the guidance, all of a sudden today, three days before we start school, I know we're one of the earliest districts that goes back to school, but how could he not have known this? And how could he allow, I mean, you had to have had discussion with him, and other superintendents had discussions with him about this mask dilemma that is across the state?
I can't speak to the, we've not had discussions about the actual bill. I can't speak for the governor or the state superintendent in terms of, you know, the publicity about the, about the law. I mean, I'd have to ask them your question to get an answer from them. But I, again, I was just as surprised, you know, when, when it was stated in the terms that it was stated by the governor, and thus my text correct, right after that meeting to Dr. Lane to ask if I was overinterpreting what was said. And you saw before the meeting, I showed you the text that I received back.
Yeah. So the text, Dr. Benson asked Dr. Lane specifically if this meant that there was a requirement for a mask mandate. And Dr. Lane responded that, yes, masks are definitely required. And I have an issue with that because, you know, we all listen to the news. We all hear the data. The data is divided. Everybody that came up today, they, they, you know, spouted out some data, and I'm sure that they all did their own research. Some of it was a little inaccurate. Some of it might have been a little bit old. But we are heavily, heavily divided. And, you know, I have a hard time with going by the CDC guidelines with fidelity, as we did last year, because they are guidances and they are recommendations. And I don't believe, you know, when the governor mentioned, he said, and I can quote, "We are to follow CDC mitigation strategies." And if you look at the mitigation strategies, there are several strategies. But I want to point out, and I want to emphasize so much, that one strategy that is not on there, that we have above most jurisdictions, a majority of the jurisdictions in this state, is our ionization system. And, you know, as the lady stood there, I will never forget, this will be ingrained in my brain, that 90% of all the COVID virus is immediately, as soon as it comes out of your breath, captured and taken into these ionization cells, taken up through the infiltration and gone through and out of the air. So that's 90% of that, which is almost as much as the vaccination rate. So almost as efficient as that. And whether we have the masks on or not, it's still going to be the 90%. And, you know, there are multiple mitigation strategies that we are supposed to follow, that we go above and beyond. And, you know, it states also in the CDC guidelines that mitigation strategies, and I quote, "can be scaled down." And they are stating that they can be scaled down because there are, they know that there are other areas, these mitigation strategies may be scaled down based on the transmission, which, you know, I also want to just touch a little bit on that, that Dr. Benson has talked about using the school matrix from the Virginia Department of Health. And, you know, we've been right around substantial to high. And substantial actually means that it's 0.1% of our citizens are currently infected. Let that sink in. I don't understand 0.1%. You have four times the chances today of getting cancer than you do of COVID in our community. 0.1%. And I, I just don't feel comfortable in myself making a decision, you know, as so many people have said, on how you are to make decisions on the healthcare of your child. And it's not just the healthcare, but it's, it's talking about the risk and the impact that it has, not only on your student, but on your family. This is not, COVID is not universal. It does not affect everybody the same way. I'm going to go into a little bit of personal, personal here and express that my father, who just recently passed, had COVID. He got COVID in February. He's, he was 87 years old. He had COPD. He had emphysema. He had Afib. He had autoimmune colitis. He had liver cancer. He had chest x-rays that were taken almost on a weekly basis. And I quote, "The doctor said that the impact from COVID was minimal." And then we have where we can have people who've never been sick. They have no underlying conditions that they know of. And then they could go, they get COVID, and they're on a ventilator, and they're gone in three days. This is not universal. This is individual. And we, as a community, need to make that decision based on what we feel is best for the individual person. I understand that we all need to come together as a community. There's no doubt we need to do that. And I understand the people that say, "I want you to wear a mask to protect me." But that is not what our God-given right and our freedom of this nation is about. We're to come together, and we are to protect ourselves and do what is right for us and our family because we do not live in a universal society. It is an individual society. So I will push as hard as I can back on any type of health restriction that we put on our children. And one more thing I want to say, I don't know that everybody knows this, and I don't have a problem admitting it, but I have a 15-year-old rising sophomore that does not attend King George Public Schools. He attends a private school in Fredericksburg, and he went to school and had to wear a mask all day long. His last day of school was Wednesday. By Saturday, my son was in tears. His face was blistered and covered in whelps and itching, his eyes, he could hardly see through them. We took him to the dermatologist. He said that he has a dermatitis that is from yeast and eczema. And once he took that mask off, the yeast in his, in his pores grew. Six weeks, my son was in agony and pain, itching, scabbing, scaling. I took him to a pickup football game, and he got out of the car. This was before he, he said it didn't bother him. And the kids weren't mean, but they were saying things like, "Oh, my gosh, what is wrong with you? Is it contagious? This is horrible. How can you live with that? Do you look at yourself in the mirror?" It was terrible. For the next five weeks, my son did not leave our house because he was so overwhelmed with the pain and the humiliation that that caused. The dermatologist said that there is an increase in that. So if we were to mandate that masks were be required, I think that is imperative that we allow parents that have children, that have issues with their skin, acne is terrible, anxiety, breathing requirements, that they are given the right to have an exemption without having a doctor's note because it is way too close. If we make that mandate tonight, there's no way
students return to the buildings. Except in one way, which is the fact that the Delta variant that we are seeing now is more transmissible than the variant that came before. You know, last year, we were required to have a health mitigation plan in order to open safely. And while the governor has in fact allowed the state of emergency to expire, we are in fact still experiencing a public health crisis. If we return our students to the buildings with masks optional, students will be required to quarantine following positive exposure, which will only lead to more learning disruption, which I believe is what we're trying to avoid this year with returning to in-person instruction, which I think we're all looking forward to, myself included. I have two children in elementary school that are itching to start next week. I recognize that there is a lot of frustration with the flip-flopping of this board over the past year. Cannot be denied, obviously. I heard a great analogy today that I thought was very fitting. So when you're on a plane for takeoff, the seatbelt sign is on. Once you reach about 10,000 feet, the seatbelt sign goes off and it's announced that you may move freely about the cabin until descent begins. However, sometimes you hit turbulence. When that happens, the seatbelt sign goes back on. In this case, the pilot did not flip-flop. The pilot did not change his mind. That pilot ran into unexpected turbulence and recognizes that it is no longer safe to not wear a seatbelt. In that case, the circumstances have changed, and he now thinks that people should wear their seatbelts. I think that is a lot like the situation that we're experiencing right now. I am also not a medical professional by any stretch of the imagination, and I therefore believe it is prudent to follow the guidance provided by medical professionals. The governor's recommendations to the school boards is that we adhere to the CDC guidance to the maximum extent practicable, which recommends, regardless of the terminology, recommends a universal masking. The maximum extent, therefore, with respects to masks, is that all staff, students, and visitors wear masks in school buildings. I do believe that the current situation with regards to COVID-19 is in fact temporary. Much of the population is fortunate at this point in time to have been given the opportunity to be vaccinated if they so choose, and that is most certainly a choice. Unfortunately, our youngest students at this time have not yet been given this opportunity. And until that time arrives, I believe it is in the best interest of our students and our community to require masks in our schools. After the entire student population has been given an opportunity to be vaccinated, then this becomes a moot point. And at that point, we will understand that it is in fact a temporary situation, and we're almost there. So I remain in support of requiring masks in the schools. Okay, Ms. Oliver?
Yeah, so I agree with the, that the youngest populations can't be vaccinated yet. But I do believe that, I believe a lot of this, and I also want a couple of things. I'm a terrible public speaker, and I apologize for that. But, um, so a lot of people here spoke tonight in favor of optional, but I do want to point out that from my experience in the emails we've been receiving, it's about half and half. There's just as many people in the community that want to retain masks as who don't. So that makes it even more difficult decision for all of us. And it's a very emotional thing, and I think that we all try not to bring in our personal views, but clearly, you can't really leave them out. I'd like to offer a suggestion that we mandate masks for pre-K through sixth grade to review maybe in 30 days or less, and optional masks for middle through high school to be on Monday through fifth.
All right. Thank you, individuals.
Okay, so the reasoning, the reasoning.
All right. Okay, ma'am.
I work for the schools and my constituents, and I'm not hearing a lot of that feedback.
Okay, Miss, all right, question, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Oliver?
I just want to make a comment about why I said sixth grade, because there are many 11-year-olds in sixth grade still, even though they're in middle school. So that would make that easier to have to monitor. Otherwise, you're asking teachers to know, "When's your birthday? When's your birthday? Are you 11 or are you 12?" The sixth graders will be in classes together with other sixth graders, excuse me, sixth graders will be in classes together with other sixth graders in a pod at the middle school. So you'd be a little bit more separated. And again, temporary, why can't?
Please, this is not an interactive session. Please, ma'am. Okay. Are there any further comments? Okay.
You know, obviously, it's emotional. But, so, my question to my fellow board members is, you represent a district, and one person is at large. That means everybody. So how can it be that all these open houses, there's 4,000 some odd students, and over half, and I would say it's more than 70%, obviously don't want masks? That is your constituency. And to suggest that you are going to make the interest in the best interest of the student, what happens to the parent? Why are they, why don't we just parent all the kids? And, you know, because you're not allowing the parents to be parents, to make them decisions. This is a slippery slope. And it's, today, it'll be masks, tomorrow, our school will be closed. We've already seen that happen. I would.
Or vitamins.
Please, please.
Drugs.
Please.
Medications.
When we talk about, when we talk about an airplane, that is temporary. You know, it's usually not, in a domestic flight, it's not more than usually six hours, and you're done. So, you know, the masks are more than six hours. They are not temporary. So COVID's here, no matter what you do. N95s, pneumonia's here, the flu is here, all these things are here. And when you get vaccinated, even if you had heart immunity, you would still have COVID. So to suggest that you would, it's temporary till COVID goes away, it's not going away. So, you know, two of y'all for sure, so far, I don't believe are representing your constituents. I believe, I can have an opinion. And maybe three. But if three of y'all are going to bully this in for the entire county, I would, as far as whether folks like this or not, I would agree to the Ms. Oliver's proposal, if y'all are going to steadfast and represent your folks.
It's offensive to keep saying Mr. Collins, because you don't know anything about my constituents.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins.
I find that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins. Noted.
So I just would like to read that in our VSB code of conduct for school board members, item number four states that "I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input." Obviously, the available facts are divisive. There's, I don't think that it's, you know, black and white. Both sides have a pretty good argument, and, you know, I just, I think it's too divisive. But as far as the appropriate public input, you know, whenever you are given something and you approve of it, you don't generally go and speak up for it. It's when you're against something is when you actually speak out. So Ms. Oliver, I don't disagree with you in that we've been pretty much 50/50. But, you know, being 50/50, when we are, have already made the vote that we're going to go optional masks, tells me that if we went the other way around, that, you know, there's going to be more people that come out and stand up against having mandated masks because we really didn't have, and I don't know if I'm explaining this right, as many people that I thought was going to come out and request the mandatory mask. And also, we have heard from people that have been at the orientations, and there are a majority, whether you want to call it 60/40, 55/45, 70/30, whatever, but the majority amongst the teachers and the staff, the teachers and the students and the parents is that they were not wearing masks. So in me, that is our public comment. And by our code of conduct, you know, and the available facts, which are, we can't really go by, I feel that we should maintain what we voted on June 21st to leave masks as optional.
So what happens if students come with no mask? Are you going to hold them under code of conduct? Are you going to call the parents and tell them?
Thank you, thank you.
So to punish a child, I would hope that they would be appealed to the board all the way to the top, even to the Supreme Court. To punish a child for these things would be ludicrous.
And I just want to say $750,000 for an ionization system that takes 90% of the virus from the air. I can't say that enough.
So it's a very valid point about the ionization system, and I know there was a comment earlier about risks. And while I do say I believe that our COVID-19 situation is temporary, by that, I'm not saying that I believe COVID is going to disappear one day. That is not the case. I think part of the masks as a, part of a layered mitigation strategy is reducing the risks of additional harm to the others in our community. I'm not, nevertheless, nevertheless, please be, please.
Yeah, it just, just.
Okay.
Okay.
Please be quiet, or you'll be escorted out of the boardroom. Thank you. So to continue the conversation in a productive fashion, while I am in favor of masks, universal masking in the schools, I would also be in support of masks for grades kindergarten or preschool through sixth. So, so are there any further, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Oliver? All right, are there any further comments, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I have one more comment. So I'd like to ask the board members, have any of you worn a mask for eight hours straight?
Yes.
Yes.
Not your husband, but eight hours straight?
Yes, I wear one to work.
Okay, and you work five days a week in the office?
I have.
You have, with a mask on. The masks were just mandated in the federal government. So my, okay, so, excuse me, let everybody talk. Okay, so my point is, is, you know, I, now I'm a federal worker, and federal workers are mandated to wear masks, whether you're vaccinated or not. And, you know, it's not just about the kids. You know, I'm worried about the teachers trying to wear, I couldn't do it. I could not do it. I have an office, I could close my door, I could take it off. So, you know, I don't know if the guidelines are set. Dr. Benson, this would be another question of, you know, when are the teachers going to be able to have breaks? And what does that mean? And then are we, if we're wearing, allowing masks to be cloth, how often do they have to be washed? You know, if we're going to go to the point where we are going to say, we are going to decide the health issues for these children, then we need to make sure that they have clean masks, that they keep them on, that the teachers have breaks, that the students have breaks. We can't just say, "Mask for everybody," and then let everybody else figure it out. We have to have those guidelines set so that they know what to follow. We can't just take a step and then take 10 steps back and say, "I don't know what to tell you to do, you just figure it out." I don't think that's fair to the teachers. I don't think that it's fair to the students. And, you know, I think that we, if we are going to mandate masks, whether it's for kindergarten through fifth or not, we need to be able to establish policies and procedures on what is going to be allowed and what the students and the teachers are going to be able to have relief from, and increase those moments of relief for them to do that.
So, though I would be for the optional masks from our original June 21, so this is the board of five. You have different opinions of five. So you have to, so you have to try to come to a consensus. You have to try to come to an agreement. And so the way I see it is, there's two of us on one side, three on the other, and one of them is willing to come forth to try to compromise. You know, yeah, I don't, I don't want, I don't, I want parents to be on the side, but I also want to be able to compromise in the public body for the public body. So Ms. Gonzalez has stepped forward way out of her comfort zone to do that. And so I would think that we should go ahead and do that. I mean, you know, that's at least the first step.
So if we're going to do that, can we at least put in some type, I mean, Dr. Benson, how long would it take for that you be able to communicate properly with the teachers and the staff and get out something out to the parents so that they'll know what the procedures and the policies are for these, wearing the masks, how long, breaks? Are we going to be able to give them a little bit more, if you want to call it recess, for these younger kids, that they can go outside and take the masks off so they're not sitting in there for hours at a time in order to do that? What about when they go to the bathroom? I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Right, and I presume that the guidance you're referring to talks about indoor does not pertain to outdoor time. So most of the procedures, I guess, or the SOPs that we used in the spring, I believe, could be easily resurrected and, you know, where needed, amended to support the board's decision. And again, I'm making an assumption, I don't know entirely what the board is compromising or what that outline is. But I guess from what I've heard, the only issue that may be administratively more challenging, I guess, implement would be the sixth grade, as the sixth grade is part of the middle school. You would have one grade in one situation, the other two in the other. But I understand Ms. Oliver's point in terms of some sixth graders being 11 years old and that aspect of that idea. But to answer your question, generally, you know, my job is to put wheels on policy this board creates. If this board decides in a way that requires us to adjust as early as tomorrow, which it very well may, will be hard at work to do that and to communicate what needs to happen from Monday.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So if there's no motion, it stays as is.
Nobody appears to know.
That would appear to be correct, yes.
We do have a motion.
So do we have, would anyone like to make a motion?
Miss Hogg didn't make a motion.
Not yet.
Okay.
I think somebody out in the audience said no.
That was out in the audience.
Okay, folks, I guess I'm left to speak up. And, Mr. Collins, I, you know, we've always agreed to disagree and more often agreed to agree. And I think in this case, we have a responsibility to our families. We have a responsibility to our staff. But first of all, we have a responsibility to children who can't represent themselves.
Ma'am, please, ma'am, please. Ma'am, please. Public comment is over, thank you. Okay, ma'am. All right, deputies, if there's further interruptions, I mean, can you ask you to please escort folks from the boardroom? Thank you. Ms. Hogg.
Thank you. I understand the fiercest of your emotions, of both directions. I've watched children die, and that's almost impossible to do. I have also wanted to fiercely protect the parents' rights when they were at risk of losing their children, and I've done that before. My point is that it is my responsibility to represent what I consider to be good educational practice and to do the best I can do to put that into our schools. So I, Mr. Collins, and Ms. Oliver, we've talked long and hard about this. I will move to make masks mandatory inside of school buildings for all staff, students, and visitors for preschool through grade six, beginning August 9th, and to be revisited at each regular school board meeting beginning September 13th.
So Dr. Benson said it was going to be difficult to do that first.
Well, we have a motion, do we have a second? So I would like to second the motion, if you may. Would we like to discuss?
So Dr. Benson just said that it was going to be hard to try to get sixth graders to wear masks in the middle school now that the sixth graders are in the middle school. So, and I'm not sure, so I don't really understand the 11, 12, because we don't, they're 12-year-olds and under. they're 12-year-olds and under can't get vaccinated, so, for a while. So I don't, I don't know why that's a cutoff. I think that being within the school and would, would be a cutoff. And I still want to say ionization, and it's not universal. I, I don't know, you know, the ionization system gives us more than the masks. And since our kids can't be vaccinated, it's going to give us, give them more than anything else that they have, so.
Okay.
You can't amend the motion.
You can amend the motion.
You can amend the motion.
Motion amended, yeah.
I'd like to amend the motion to what Ms. Hock said, but to pre-K through fifth grade. And again, this will be revisited regularly, um, within 30 days, if not sooner. I think Dr. Benson said September 13th, but as we watch the numbers and the transmission rates and what's going on in the county. But I do, I agree that these youngest students cannot be vaccinated. I don't, I don't think it's fair to, to them or to people in their homes that are bringing stuff home to them possibly and all those other things that you hear about all the time. So that's the amended motion with a little additional.
Okay, so do we have a, do we have a second for the amended, the amendment to the motion? No, to, to fifth grade?
You can second your amendment.
Certainly. Okay, so the motion on the table now is to make masks mandatory inside all school buildings for staff, students, visitors for preschool through grades five, beginning August 9th, and to be revisited at each regular school board meeting, beginning September 13th, correct?
I'd like to.
Okay, so is there any further? Thanks, thank you, ma'am. Is there any further?
I'd like to add an amendment to the motion. I'd like to add amendment that if a parent wants to sign a waiver in elementary, they can.
And that waiver is not contingent on any kind of doctor's signature?
Yes.
It's parental. And they have to give a, a valid reason behind it.
How do teachers monitor who has a waiver and who doesn't?
Just like you do for the vaccinations, it would all be through Mrs. Fisher and the administration. Is that not correct, Dr. Benson? We have a form, we have to create a form.
You'll have it on file.
Well, let's, let's, let's ask Dr. Benson how that would be handled.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm trying to keep up with what, what are you suggesting? You're, you're suggesting a, a waiver form?
So the motion on the table is for, um, it was originally for six and younger, and then it was amended to five and younger. And then the motion with the second was amended, if anyone, uh, the five grade and under parents want a waiver, um, they can fill out a waiver for, for not, their child not wearing a mask.
If it's, yeah, I think Spatsy is doing that, right? And yeah, and then that's, you know, if they have anxiety or they have trouble breathing or, um, and issues.
So I don't think that you need to, you just fill out a waiver that you understand the responsibilities and the,
Yeah.
you know, you're taking the risks, um, not that you have to prove anything.
Correct. It would just be a waiver that a parent would have to sign with the responsibility.
Certainly, we can create, I guess, if the question, does it still need to be answered? As far as a waiver form, we do not have one in existence. We could create one, no doubt. I would assume for Monday, um, essentially, we would be masks, um, optional as we would collect such waiver requests. We would have to operate that way. I don't think we could issue a waiver form tomorrow morning and expect it to, uh, to be returned by Monday morning.
So you can, you can put a date of, um, a future date of the, this whole motion with amendments not to take effect till a specific date.
How would that work?
So it's like Dr. Benson said, it would be optional. And then as of August 11th, 12th, 13th, or what's the following Monday, would be the 16th. Then it would be mandated, with the exception of the parents that filled out a waiver.
That's, yes, someone needs to.
Don't we have an opt-out form for some of the immunizations? We, we used to.
We have.
Yes, and I think that's, we could adapt something. We could certainly, that's why I said we could create something. It could be an adaptation of a, of an already existing form.
Right.
I'm not worried about the creation of the form. I was just trying to talk through the implementation of, of the concept, that's all.
Right.
Meaning that it's getting it out to the parents, having the parents return it, having the teachers process it, and then that, that whole problematic.
Yes, that's part of it, but also, you know, the, the, the timing of it, of course. And I understand the, the idea about making it date effective. The only question I would have to make sure that we start at school Monday correctly would be, from a policy standpoint, so the existing optional would remain until such a date this board would then require basically the opt-out form be returned to school. Is that?
That's what he's saying.
Yeah.
Return the form to school.
Return it.
But not, not to keep it cleaner and to not be what I think would be confusing, and hang on for y'all, here's what I have to say. If you make it mandatory beginning Monday, but those who choose not to send their children in masks, we could do it that way, which is the same thing essentially, and then get the form out there, rather than saying, you don't need to wear masks today, but then you're going to need to wear them next week. So I think you could, you could go with the amendment, the policy, whatever we just did, a motion. And those who choose not to send their kids with masks, well, there won't be any consequences. Then when you get the form, you fill out the form and send it back. I think that just makes it cleaner. Does that make any sense? Or is that not cleaner?
So I would like to know what is the difference between that and making, and simply having masks be optional in the first place?
Yeah, no, it's, I don't think it says, because there are some people out there that their children can't wear masks for certain reasons, you know? And then there are other parents that they're, they're okay with their kids wearing it and they're okay with their kids not wearing it, you know? So, you know, I think that if it's, if we say, all right, you know, it's, it's required, but you have to have a sign a waiver, and the waiver usually has, like for the vaccine, it states that you have to have a medical or a religious reason for that. So the parent's responsibility is you're going to have to have a, a medical. I don't think there's a religious reason for wearing a mask.
They don't think in waiver, because that's their parental right not to have a medical.
No, I, I don't think that that, uh, you know.
So, so if, if.
It's not going to go.
If 95% of the kids have a waiver, you'll see the will of the parents.
Yeah.
Well, there was a motion, there was amendment, and then all of them were seconded, so.
Well, there were, the, there was a dis.
It's either up or down. It's, um.
So the latest, the latest, I don't believe that we had, well, the state, the motion with the amendment regarding the waiver needs to be stated, I believe. I don't understand what it was.
So I, I think it was that masks will be required for K through five, preschool and K through five, with the option of parents being able to sign a waiver for their child not to wear a mask. And I would like to change it so that that waiver is due by August 16th. It's mask optional. We all had, we had orientation today and we had, you know, the kids were thousands, or hundreds of kids in, in the gymnasium and, and.
But mask, mask weren't.
That masks were optional.
Were optional.
It was an option.
So the motion's on the table.
So that's why I said that, so 16th would be the month, a week, yes. Gives the teachers to assess, and then that way they can get back to us if we want to hold another special meeting, if we're hearing something differently, if we want to, you know, reassess, gives us a little bit of time to reassess if things are really going south and we're hearing a lot of complaints from the teachers. I think that's, you know, that would be reasonable.
Or if the numbers go up.
They stay optional.
Stay optional until the 16th, then they're mandatory.
I'd like to call the questions.
I want to make sure we understand, I want to try to make sure we understand the motion. So to make masks mandatory in the school buildings for all staff, students, and visitors for preschool through grade five, beginning August 16th?
Beginning, yes.
That's when the waivers are due back.
Okay, beginning August six, beginning August 16th, with the option of parents signing and returning a waiver by August 16th?
Yes, they would have to have their waiver in by August 16th.
So.
Okay, so the waiver is due, I mean, you can say Friday, the 13th.
Can we call the question?
Okay, making sure I get that, with waiver, returning a waiver by Friday, August 13th. Okay, so.
And then masks will be made mandatory, beginning August 16th.
Right, so motion to make masks mandatory inside all school buildings for all staff, students, and visitors for preschool through grade five, beginning August 16th, with the options of parents signing and returning a waiver for their students to opt out by Friday, August 13th.
We'll, we'll get to that.
Yeah, we'll get there.
We, we got a motion on the table.
Okay, is that, did I, did I capture that correct? Did I, did I capture that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes nay, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, um, to allow teachers, um, in the K-5 below to have a waiver for masks also. For themselves.
For, okay, so motion for teachers in grades K three, preschool through five, since that's what we're saying, right? Preschool through grade five, to submit a waiver.
Oh, and staff, teachers and staff.
Staff, sorry, sorry, for staff.
Sorry, amend my motion instead.
Make sure we get this correct. Okay, motion for staff and preschool through grade five to submit a waiver for themselves to opt out of mandatory masking by, to same, same timeframe as above, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Need a second.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes nay, motion carries.
So I, I just would like to make a request that for our board meeting on Monday, that we have a discussion item so that we can understand what the thresholds, what information we're going to use in order to determine any kind of change in these policies moving forward. I also would like to have on there a discussion item. We can just start talking about this. I don't think that Dr. Benson's staff has to really do anything. But if the level of transmission gets to a certain point, is there, and I hate to say these words, but is there ever going to be, you know, at what point will we need to discuss virtual, hybrid, and in-person? And how will that look? Just having an open discussion to see if we can come up with some definitive thresholds.
So, so you wanted, sorry, just to make sure I understand. So for Monday, you want to discuss implications for threshold plans for a potential return to virtual? Should that be the case? And was there something before that?
And also if we want to change the mask policy.
The law says you will, you will offer in-person. The law says you shall, that's a shall.
So, yeah.
I, I would, I would disagree with you in going down that rabbit hole.
I said virtual and hybrid and in-person. Yeah.
Oh, she said Monday.
I said, we'll talk about it Monday. Yeah, I just want to talk about it.
Okay, to review, okay.
We need to be prepared.
Okay, so discuss the review, the frequency of the review of the mask policy.
No.
No?
On the mask policy. It was a virtual, going virtual.
Both, it was both.
Hybrid, both, talking about our. Yes, masks.
Said mask.
Mask one.
How are you going to do that?
No, the threshold. So we don't want to say, okay, we're in the high risk and now we're going to require masks for everybody. You know, I want to make sure that, that, you know, when we get to that point, what is that point going to look like? So that we're all not blindsided, so that everybody has an idea. Things start to get out of whack and get out, you know, and we can talk about it. But I think that we need to discuss it so that the parents and the teachers know when this policy may be changed.
No matrix.
Right.
Okay, so I would guess, all right, so I would ask Dr. Benson, as far as the, the request to discuss, like, plans with regards to, or I guess, like, backup plans for potential virtual instruction. Could you provide information on that from Monday? Or what are your, what are your thoughts on the matter?
So, yeah, I don't think you, we need to, I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, my intention wasn't that we get the staff involved. It's just the intention of talking about if we use Matrix or what is that going to look? And then, you know, let the staff know, hey, if this happens, we need to prepare for this and this is what we want you to prepare for, whether it's, right.
Okay, so do we need, do we need anything to be prepared for us in order to have that discussion?
No, I don't think so.
Prepare to be closed, that's what I'm hearing.
If it gets real bad, we need to have a plan.
We, we already did that.
I don't want to be like we did, like, right, but okay, so that's, that could be the, we're going to discuss this on Monday. That could be the discussion. We're just going to go back to exactly what we did in January, February timeframe.
I think.
I, I don't think that we should sit back and wait until, you know.
If we're closed, we're going to, we're already, we already done it one time.
We, we don't want to do that, that's my whole point. We don't want to go 100% virtual.
Right.
Right, even if the government.
Can't go 100% virtual.
We can't go, correct. So we need to.
So we're going to, okay, so I return to my question, I understand.
Now, Chair, one of the questions that we'll need answered is whether we can purchase more seats through Virtual Virginia? So that, that's closed off to us completely. And there are no other formats for us to use for virtual.
Description, or you mean?
I'm asking.
Description or format?
Yes.
None that I'm aware of.
I believe there is a free virtual learning.
Did, did you get a second on that?
There is a, a free virtual learning.
Just clarify.
Okay, are you discussing it now?
We don't want to discuss it now, it's eight o'clock. It's eight thirty.
I don't care what time it is.
Okay.
I'm retired.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now adjourned till Monday, August 9th.